I still remember this guy when he got hit in the head with a gun. That guy got hit in the head with a gun. A few years ago.
No, no, I figured. I looked at him and said, "What did you talk about?" I knew exactly what you did. But I pulled up an document and I'm like, "Come on, screw it up." That's the correct.
But so much for the details.
But you know what you needed?
Alright. So anytime I'm able to.
One last thing.
So we are doing a, um, award ceremony then?
For the high school?
Promotion?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it then first.
The high school or the promotion?
Uh, high school. He wants me to do it then first.
And then?
Can we all take our seats, please? Wow, what a great audience. Good evening, everyone. It's a regular commission meeting. Call to order. City Clerk, will you call the rule, please?
Good evening. Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Schwart?
Here.
Commissioner Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Orde?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All staff, our pledge of allegiance, please. Vice Mayor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. We're gonna switch a couple of things. We're gonna take the West Broward first. Because you're so important. No, I didn't mean that, please. I didn't. Alright, let's go. Well, it's amazing. Another great award for West Broward High. And no matter what the category, I just have all of these proclamations and that, and we present them to West Broward. So we're really proud of you all. So this is City of Pembroke High's West Broward High School Competitive Cheerleading Team. Whereas on February 4th, 2023, the West Broward High School Competitive Cheerleading Team won the FHSA Class 2A State Competitive Cheerleading Championships at the Exacta Tech Arena at the University of Florida in Gainesville. Whereas West Broward High School Competitive Cheerleading Team won its second competitive state championship in the Class 2A State Medium Non-Tumbling Competition with 91.10 points. Wow. And whereas this is the third state championship win for Coach Daniel Culberson, who has coached his team for seven years. Coach Culberson also cheered for the West Broward High School from 2010 to 2013, and won three state championships with this win. West Broward High School Competitive Cheerleading Team are six state, this is six state champion and. Whereas the West Broward High School Competitive Competition Team is as follows. And would you all come forward when I announce your name? Isabel Garcia. Right up here in front. Wow. Look at you. Were you in tumbling?
No.
No, me either. Sofia Dominguez. Jordan Cypress. Is she shy?
She's shy.
Annabelle Maldonado. Brady Bracato. Ava Dominguez. I hope I get this right. Elisa Ortuza. Brianna O'Connell. Nyla Harper. Jasmine Bolanis. Stephanie Eon. Ella Castillo. Gila Zuniga. I'd probably kill that one. Rachel Zimmerman. Leah James. Alan Ascension. Balkan Earthkin. Okay, now for the cheerleading coaches. Danielle Culberson. Amber Sanangelo. Carlos Hetchavera. Hetchavera, yeah. Cory Jackson. Pablo Salto. Mr. Fertuth, did you want to come forward? Oh, I'm helping a picture? Okay, now therefore, I Frank Ciotis, Mayor of the Greatest City in the World, Pembroke High,
Yes, sir.
along with the city commissioners, to hereby commend and congratulate the West Broward High School Competitive Cheerleading Team for their dedication and perseverance in achieving another championship season. So, Mr. Principal, and who should we give this to?
Uh, Coach Culberson?
Coach?
Okay, Coach, uh, Mayor, thank you. I just, uh, want to thank the commissioners, thank you, Mayor, uh, for the opportunity. I just wanted to let you know, and we're so proud of our cheerleading team. We're so proud of our athletics, and, uh, all of them are student athletes and they're scholars. Um, they went on to compete nationally and in the world category at the ESPN Wide World of Sports in Orlando, and they came in second in the nation and second in the world. So, yeah, let's give it up. So, congratulations, guys. Thank you for the honor.
Alright, where's Amanda? You're not taking the picture? No. Do we have a picture taker? Okay, let's go, let's go this way. Uh, we can have. Can you take a picture? Here. Alright. So we're gonna, we're gonna have various poses. Alright, so what we do in Pembroke High, we do one, two, three, pose.
Alright, my pose is in the middle, guys. Gentlemen, the flag.
Congratulations, all. Great script. I will give them a few minutes.
I think so. I'm looking forward to that, yeah.
Thank you, you're all welcome. Keep up the good work.
That's pretty cool, Mayor. That's pretty cool.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Alright. Let me ask you a question, Chief. Who has the greatest police department in the state? We do. I wanted to see if you knew that. Alright, Chief, it's a great honor. We're gonna promote. Would you come up and say a few words, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So, before I begin, I just want to say one more time, um, thank you to the city and all of you for all of the support that you had for our department and for Charlie Herring's family. Um, obviously, the most traumatic thing we've probably ever dealt with is a police department, personally. Um, but, um, I'm here to tell you, your department is doing wondrous things. Uh, we are working through it. They are fully supporting each other and Charlie's family. They are fully supporting me, which is wonderful. Um, but we all agree that this city's phenomenal, and it was a wonderful tribute to him, uh, last Monday. So, thank you for that. Now, moving on. Big, important things today, and thank you all for being here. Um, thank you to all my fellow brothers and sisters at the police department for being here. Thank you to my staff for being here, and thank you families for being here. There's two people we want to bring up today. For some reason, they want more responsibility. Be careful what you wish for. So let me tell you a few things about the first gentleman that we're gonna bring up, and this is Christian Rogers. Come on up, Christian. So, currently Sergeant Christian Rogers, he joined our police department in May of 2009. Accompanying him today are his wife Megan, children Sofia and Connor, his father Joseph, father-in-law and mother-in-law Kevin and Claudia King. During his career, he has served in the following positions: as a patrol officer, as a field training officer, and as a member of our SWAT team. Uh, a couple of them are here today. Thank you. Um, in February of 2017, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And while in this capacity, he served as a patrol sergeant, a field training sergeant, and as a general crime sergeant within our investigations division. He's also one of our public information officers, and he's most recently served as an internal affairs sergeant. So you gotta be careful what you tell this guy. In addition, he's also assisted our agency and many departments here as an active assailant instructor. Prior to joining our department, Sergeant Rogers earned a bachelor's degree in history from Florida Atlantic University, and he's currently enrolled at Florida. from Florida Atlantic University, and he's currently enrolled at Florida State University's Master's Program of Public Administration with a certificate in disaster management. Sergeant Rogers is also a graduate of both Tier One and Tier Two of the Command College for the National Tactical Officers Association. He has completed hundreds of hours in additional specialized law enforcement training and leadership courses, and he's also teaching on various topics at Broward College's Institute of Public Safety, which is our police academy. Over the course of his career, Sergeant Rogers has received numerous individual and unit accommodations, as well as thank you letters from the public and others, and he has twice been the recipient of the department's life-saving award. It is with great confidence that I present Sergeant Christian Rogers to the city administration and our city commission, and to our Pembroke Pines Police Department family, and also to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines, as he enters this leadership role and now the rank of captain. Mayor Ordus, will you please administer the oath of office?
Sergeant, raise your right hand, please. Oh, okay, that's better. I, Christian Rogers.
I, Christian Rogers.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
State of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Pembroke Pines.
Charter and ordinances of the city of Pembroke Pines.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties.
And I will well and faithfully perform all the duties.
Of captain.
Of captain.
And the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
And the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
Which I am now about to enter.
Which I am now about to enter.
So, help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations. So, who would you like to have come up and put your badge?
My two children will be here.
All right.
Um.
Are you wearing your badge?
I don't know.
Are you?
Yes.
All right.
Test, test.
Say a few words?
I'm gonna say a few words. Before I begin, I'd like to dedicate this evening, uh, to my grandfather, Joseph Rogers Senior, who passed away this past December. My grandfather was a twentieth-century Renaissance man. He was a United States Marine, a construction worker, an entrepreneur, a hunter, rancher, and a pilot, but most importantly, a man who loved God and his family. I would usually call him at the end of my work week on the way home, and we would talk about everything, from my job to politics, to the crime that somehow happened in northwest Montana. Pop up. I miss our conversations, but I know you see this and I know you're proud. I want to thank our city manager, Charlie Dodge, our assistant city managers, our mayor, Frank Ordus, our vice mayor, Jay Schwartz, our city commissioners, I recycle, Angelo Castillo and Tom Good, our city attorney, Madam Clerk, thank you all for this continued support and this opportunity. I want to recognize and thank our command staff. Chief Shempano, thank you for this great opportunity, I will not take this responsibility lightly. Assistant Chief Bermuda, thank you for your guidance these last few years. Majors Vargas, Ziquez, and Serino, thank you for your continued support. And to my fellow captains, I look forward to working alongside you and leading our agency in the ever-evolving world of law enforcement. I also want to recognize our civilian staff. If road patrol is the backbone of every police department, the civilian staff is the foundation. Without a strong civilian staff, we would not be able to do our jobs effectively. I would like to thank Fran-Franis Sarai, Shalini, Faisal, Melissa, Amanda, and Robin, and the many others that have helped me over the last few years. Sergeant Pedron, congratulations. Sergeant Pedron is a former trainee of mine. Being a field training officer was a pleasure and is now an honor to be promoted on the same night with you. To my father, Joseph Rogers, thank you for instilling in me a strong sense of work ethic and a moral compass from a very young age. I would also like to recognize my in-laws, Kevin and Claudia King. Excuse me. Kevin, it has been ten years since you last wore this uniform. And when you retired, we were still driving Crown Bex, but I always seek your advice. I'm not sure this is gonna come to a surprise to most of you, but I've read most of Navy SEAL Jaco Wellings' leadership books, and I listen to his podcast frequently. He has a motivational video called "Good," and in it, he discusses how when something bad happens, something good always comes out of it. I've shown it to my children quite a few times. If they lose a soccer game, it's not necessarily a bad thing, because they can learn from the loss and get better. If they didn't get it one hundred percent on the test, they know to study more next time. One day, I shared with my daughter that something didn't go the way I'd hoped as I was driving her to school. Without even looking up from the book that she's always reading, she said to me, "Good, more time to get better." Her response is exactly what I needed to hear. We should always strive to be the best version of ourselves daily, even when things don't go our way. Life is about improving, being the best version of you, not only for yourself, but for those around you. If we focus on the negative aspect of things, of every setback, we can never move forward or grow. Sofia and Connor, no career accomplishment, and that's the honor of being your father. Love you both. And lastly, but most importantly, I want to thank my wife, Megan. Not only is she a loving and supportive wife and mother, but she's also my full-time speech editor. If every, if every man had a wife like her, the world would be a much better place. My favorite president, Theodore Roosevelt, has a speech titled "Citizen in a Republic," and I would like to share some of it with you all tonight. Quote, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strive valiantly, who err and come up short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcomings, but who does actually strive to do the deeds." End quote. There are many critics out there, many who call to defund our profession, who want to abolish law enforcement altogether, or who want to dissect every decision that we make without ever putting on a badger or vest, but they are not the man in the arena. The man in the arena are the SWAT team members who were called out on a Sunday evening to a barricaded subject, seeing the unspeakable, but finding a little girl, and carrying her way to safety, wishing they could have done more for her family. They are the detectives conducting surveillance in our neighborhoods at all hours of the night and then going to work the following morning trying to solve a case. It's the Charlie shift officer going call-to-call all shift, doing their best to keep up with the never-ending calls for service. It's the Alpha shift officer patrolling our neighborhoods at three AM while we sleep peacefully in our beds. The men in the arena are the Bravo shift officers who responded to a traffic crash involving a motorcycle, not realizing it was one of our own involved and having to put aside their own emotions in order to do their job. The man in the arena is us. We all took this job for different reasons, yet we all put our vests and gun belts, put our vests and gun belts on the same. Every shift, every call-out, every overtime assignment, we walk into the unknown. I look forward to leading the men and women into the arena, the men and women of the Pembroke Police Department. Thank you.
Megan, can I take a picture? Congratulations, everyone.
Still hearing me?
Yep.
All right, Officer Richard Pedron, come on up. So, Officer Richard Pedron joined our department in June of two thousand fifteen when he entered the police academy. Accompanying him today are his wife, Lauren, his parents, Roberto and Ruth, his sister, Lauren, his Aunt Lordis, and his father-in-law and mother-in-law, Albert and Carmen. During his career, he has served in the following positions: he has been a patrol officer, he's been a field training officer, and he's also been a member of our dive team. Officer Pedron holds an associate's degree from Broward College and a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Florida International University. In addition, he has completed hundreds of hours in specialized law enforcement training courses. During his career, he has received numerous department commendations and letters of appreciation from the community. And at this year's upcoming awards banquet, which you all will be at later, um, he will be formally awarded the department's life-saving award for his actions on a call which occurred this past September. It is with great confidence that I present Officer Richard Pedron to our city administration and our city commission, to our Pembroke Pines Police Family, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines as he enters this leadership role and the rank of sergeant. Mayor Ordus, will you please administer the oath of office?
Yes, Chief, thank you. Please raise your right hand. I, Richard Pedron.
I, Richard Pedron.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Pembroke Pines. That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform all the duties of sergeant.
Perform all the duties of sergeant.
And the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
And the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
Which I am now about to enter. So, help me God. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. I stand before you today as a proud member of the Pembroke Pines Police Department with a great sense of honor and gratitude. I am honored that I've been given the opportunity to the rank of sergeant after serving for only, serving for seven years as a patrol officer. Being a police officer is not an easy task, as we are entrusted with the responsibility of keeping our community safe, secure. We work tirelessly to serve and protect the people we swore to serve, putting our lives on the line every single day. Throughout my seven years of service, I've been privileged to work alongside some of the best and most dedicated officers in this department. I have learned from them, grown with them, and shared in their passion for serving our community. Some of those that I believe deserve special credit are Sergeant Daniel Samarco, Officer Christopher Abbey, FTO Adam Koenig, and Detective Ralph Ranzo. Ironically enough, I am honored to share this special occasion with newly-promoted Captain Christian Rogers, who was instrumental in guiding me as a newly-hired officer during my field training phase. Thank you, sir. These influential colleagues were instrumental in building the professional I have grown to be, and I look forward to continue learning and growing from them and so many others that I have the honor of working beside. As I now take this new role as sergeant, I am humbled and honored to lead and serve alongside these exceptional individuals. I am determined to uphold the values of integrity, respect, and professionalism that this department stands for. As a sergeant, I will strive to inspire my fellow officers to challenge them to be their best and to support them in their efforts to protect and serve our community. I will work tirelessly to ensure that our department continues to be an organization that is committed to excellence and dedicated to serving the people with the highest level of professionalism and integrity. In closing, I want to express my deepest appreciation to the command staff, all of my colleagues, the city commission, my family, my wife, Lauren, and the community for their support and trust in me and this great department. I'm grateful for the opportunity to, for this opportunity to serve as a sergeant in this department, and I pledge to do my utmost to earn and maintain that trust every single day. Thank you all.
Sure, come on up. Yes. What's that? Hold it down. Because you want me to?
All right.
Okay. Thanks for telling them.
Congratulations. Glad you did that.
Yeah, that was really nice.
Very nice.
Very nice. Good-looking uniforms on them, I tell you.
People are jealous when we talk about our police department. They should be. Okay, we're now at the items of the republic. Items, I think they're request the public.
Our nation.
City, uh, Marlene?
Yes, Mayor, announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda. We do have item eleven pulled from the agenda by the applicant. The applicant submitted a letter of request to defer the item to May third, the May third commission meeting.
Okay, how about? Okay, how about items at the republic? Items at the public? Any items in the public?
No items, Mayor.
Okay. How about a commission audit report?
No commission audit or report.
Feels of the Board of Adjustment decisions?
None, Mayor.
All right, we have an announcement of board and committee appointments. Mayor Frank Cioris is wishing to announce the following appointment through the Charter Review Board for the mayoral statewide member seat. Christopher Zady, would you come forward? Mr. Zady, was this our first meeting last night? We appreciate it. Let's say a couple of words, Chris.
Good evening. Just want to say thank you, thank you to the commission, thank you, Mayor, for appointing me to this board. I am humbled and I look forward to, um, working with everyone there. It seems like a good group of people and should be good.
All right, thank you, Chris, good luck.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Before we start on the consent agenda, which I'm assuming is the next, the next up, could I have just a moment? I have a couple of things I'd like to say.
I knew it, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night, March 2nd, 6:30 right here in our great hall, is our, I believe, Principal Kestlana, which is our 11th, 11th Raising Positive Children Forum, and we are so looking forward to another presentation of this, the heading, the title, I guess, if you will, on this particular one is tapping into your parent superpowers. And we all believe that parents do have superpowers, they just need to realize they have them and they need, you know, to, some little support to get out there and make that happen with their kids. So I just wanted to remind everybody, please come again, and I think you will, first off, you are going to like the presentation. Our own Dr. Laura Cruz will be our keynote speaker, but we have a few other little things that will be a surprise to you all when you get there, so please come out and participate. We always do so much appreciate the support from everyone. Principal Kestlana, did you have anything that you wanted to say? Good? Okay, good. The other thing is, you know, this is March, this is our first day of March, and you all, obviously you all know that this is Women's History Month. So last year, as part of Women's, March is Women's History Month celebration, City of Pembroke Pines invited Pembroke Pines residents to nominate a special woman in their life who personifies the vital role women play, not only in American history, but in our everyday lives, our true she-ros. An annual event, we'd like to once again encourage you to nominate a special woman in your life and explain in no more than 300 words why she is a she-ro, and email your nomination to our Pines Media at pinesmedia@ppines.com by March 31st at 9:00 PM. All entries will be read, and women nominated will be honored at an April commission meeting. And you can find all the more details about this on our website at pines.com. There are heroes all around us, as you just, well, you didn't see the other video, but there are heroes all around us, and they are heroes that we certainly will never want to forget. Please share with us the heroes or she-ros in your life, the women doctors, teachers, police officers, firefighters, nurses, moms, and soldiers, so we may recognize their efforts, courage, and strength. Women's History Month began as a national celebration in 1981 when Congress passed resolution designating a week, a week in March as Women's History Week. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, which is now known as the National Women's History Alliance, Congress passed a resolution designating, designating the entire month of March as Women's History Month. It celebrates women's accomplishments and contributions, and also is a chance to reflect on the trailblazing women who led the way for change. The 2023 Women's History Month theme is all about celebrating women who tell our stories, calling special attention to those who are devoted to pursuing truth, one story at a time. So Mayor, Women's History Month is here, we're going to have our she-ros again. Well, please to go on the city's website to see how you can submit an application for someone that you are looking for. The other thing, Mayor, everyone needs to, March 10th, is our big Relay for Life. You know, Mayor, you're a big, big part of supporting that always. It's March 10th at 5 o'clock, and it will be at the Charter High School, so we do hope that you all will be able to, to get out there and participate. And Mayor, my last thing, and it's kind of a personal, you know, point of person again, you know, you hear me talk about my grandson Alex, which I'm always going to continue to talk about, my Marine Alex, but he's in Washington DC now doing his intel training. But we just got a phone call from our granddaughter Emily Siple, who lives in Gainesville with her parents there, and she just got her letter of acceptance to US. So we are extremely proud of her. She's going to be going into the, into the medical field, she wants to be a doctor, and so the fact that she so early on got her letter of acceptance, we are very, very proud of her and very happy for, for her future. So just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing, appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, then let's go into our agenda, consent agenda, one through 11. What is your pleasure?
Second.
Moved and seconded, this is pulled. Uh, City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Quasi judicial? City Clerk?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
It was pulled.
Ordances and resolutions?
First reading under number 12, Mr. Mayor.
All right, second reading ordinances? How about first reading ordinance number 12, sir?
May I read, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. Item number 12 is proposed ordinance number 2023-02, which is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 32 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions at section 32.192 entitled Composition and Quorum, providing for an alternate member, board members, to count towards a quorum irrespective of the district represented by the alternate member, providing for codification, providing for complex separability, and providing for an effective date.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo, is it second? Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siple, discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's the, oh, Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very, very much. And I want to apologize to staff in advance. Uh, I had this note, and I didn't write you guys in advance, and that violates the, the way I do business. However, I do have a question on page three or four. On page three or four of the ordinance, it says there shall be a rotation of alternate members by district to vote in the absence of a regular member from the same or different district. We specifically asked for that change. I'm simply asking, because there's no further language in here, how would this work? Or should we work on this language to make it a little more clear between first and second reading? For example, is the, is the person, is the rotation to be done in advance of the meeting? How would the rotation work? If the person who's picked as an alternate in the rotation is in present, can some other member be there? I want to make sure that we're crystal clear in this, so that when they're at a meeting and they need an alternate, they don't feel constrained by the language. So I don't know whether city attorney, or manager, or someone else can answer that for me. City Attorney?
Sir, if I can, quickly to the Commissioner, the objective was the same consistent objective of the commission that directed this language, which is essentially to capture an opportunity so that you wouldn't lose a quorum, wouldn't be able to have a quorum, so that you wouldn't be limited to the district-only issue in the alternate. Certainly, we could add some potential language that would expand the clarification further. The, the objective is pure, it's what the commission directed, which was to make sure that if there was a quorum question, that an alternate from any district would be able to serve. We did not provide a specific mechanism for the rotation that was described by the commission.
And, and just, I appreciate that, and just to be clear, I'm, I'm all for the direction the commission gave. I just want to make sure that whoever the clerk is at this particular board meeting have all the tools in the toolbox so that, so that alternates can be selected, and I'm wondering whether this language is sufficient. Maybe we should talk a little bit about how the rotation is to happen, and what happens if that person in the rotation isn't there, and then who's the next person in the rotation, or how this is going to be carried out, so that when an alternate member needs to sit as a regular member, they can be, they can be selected in an orderly way. Thank you. Mayor?
Commissioner Siple?
Thank you. Yeah, I, when I read this show, I was hoping, I was hoping it would come back to us, would be a little bit more of, first this happens, then this happens, then that happens, a little bit more direction that way. At the last meeting, I did make the friendly amendment to include language that would set up a rotation of alternate members by district to vote in the absence of a regular, regular member from the same or different district. So what I, what I was, the way I was seeing this would, would roll out is, first off, whether you are a regular member or you are an alternate member, and you're at that meeting, you are allowed to participate in that meeting by asking questions and all of that. You just, if you're an alternate, you don't vote unless, that's the only difference, is you don't vote unless, unless now this issue has come up. So what I was hoping, Mayor, is that we would do like a one, two, three, four, five rotation, five, you know, one through four being each of our districts, and five being yours, Mayor, for your, for your appointees, and should, as it says here, should there be an absence, say, in, in, in my district, District 3, that they're not there, the regular member is not there, every effort should be given that the alternate member from District 3 would, would step up. If in fact there is not an alternate from District 3 that is there, then the, the clerk from, for that board would have this rotation and would say, I would see, then they would start at the top of the list, one, two, three, four, five, and that would be, let's say this first meeting, that is exactly what happened, District 3, regular member wasn't there, and there was not an alternate member there. The city clerk, the, the board clerk would then start at the top of the list and say the alternate from District 1, and if that person is there, then they take that, that position. So let's say that's what happens. At the next meeting, if there's the same kind of scenario, they wouldn't start back up at the top with, with District 1, they would go to District 2, and that's how we would, that's how I thought, that we would have a fair amount of rotation happening with the alternates filling, filling spots. And that would mean then that if, if that's how we, how we decide to give direction, that would be that one extra step that that board clerk would have to keep in her minutes, in her notes, knowing that going forward each meeting, that rotation would progress to the next one, and the next one, and the next one. And so that's how I was seeing that that would happen.
Would you like to make an amendment?
I'd like to weigh in, Mayor, before that.
Would you like to make an amendment? Chris Siple?
Um, I, I would, I would like to hear a little bit more, but I would also ask that the city attorney is-
All right, no, I just thought you wanted to make an amendment.
Well, the city attorney was going to offer some better language.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Certainly, I, I welcome this discussion. I served as the city's economic development chair for three years, and I had alternates, I had district members, I had chamber members, and I had members who came to meetings and members who didn't. So I, I think we're getting into the weeds, I think the citizen boards, this would be a, this recommendation of rotation certainly would be inconsistent with the way that the rest of the boards are being run. It's the discretion of the chair or the vice chair of that citizen board to seat the alternate. Now, if the members don't agree with the chair's decision to sit the alternate, then Roberts rule, they can go ahead and overturn the chair, but I think we're really getting into micromanaging a citizen board process, it should really be organic. You have a group of people who certainly have the ability to work together. So if you set up this rotation system, you're actually going to have more absences, because if an alternate knows that they're not up for that week, for that month, then they're just not going to show up, which defeats the entire purpose of having-
They wouldn't know that until they were there.
Commissioner?
It would defeat the entire purpose of, of what we're trying to do, and that's to get more attendance. So I can't, if, if there's, if there's a suggestion of a rotation, I can't support that. What I would support is doubling some efforts to get people appointed to the board, so we're not put in this position to begin with. That would be, that would be my push tonight. So I would say if there's any kind of language cleanup, it's at the discretion of the chair and the majority members, because what we did on economic development is depending on which alternate was more engaged, I would say we'll, we'll go ahead and sit alternate member, and then the board would agree by, by motion. And then that was it, and then we conducted our business, and we were done in 60 minutes. Some of these board meetings are going on longer than, than, than they should. There's, there's more focus on attendance and reading minutes than there is actual work, but that's another discussion for another day. I think just leave it up to the chair colleagues, if that's the clarification that you're looking for.
Hey, Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, interesting perspective. I mean, I, I can go either way. I, I will say, you know, i- if we go in the direction of the vice mayor, then let's just make the, the edit and move forward. But if we can't, we're going to talk about rotation, I can understand the need from my colleagues for additional language and a better explanation, and if we're going to go with the rotation, then personally, I'd, I'd like to just go ahead and table the item to give the, the attorney more time to craft that language to be presented to us, so that we can have a more productive conversation, you know, based on the direction that was given from the conversation we made.
Yeah, I second that.
Second by Commissioner Siple, discussion on table, for a time certain of next commission meeting, Commissioner?
Next commission meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
May I, 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 I missed, what are we doing?
We're tabling.
We're tabling it to give them an opportunity for the additional language.
Okay. All right. I call the roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Regular agenda, discussion, possible action to approve the appointment of Margot Paquette Mercado to the common member, common commission member seat on the Art and Culture Board. So vote.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, is she, is she here?
I thought she was here.
Not here? All right, all those who favor I? All opposed? I do have it. Light the league, we have a luncheon tomorrow up in the northern part of the county, and report to the city manager? City Attorney?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, commission items? Hearing none, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Thank you all. Okay.